Okay. Calling to order, the Orleans Parish School Board, public hearing 2021-2022, consolidated budget for August 19th, 2021. The time now is 5:08 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ashley?
Present.
Mr. Marshall?
Present.
Ms. Bowdoin?
Present.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Parker?
Present.
Dr. Wagner Romero?
Present.
Mr. Zerbegon?
Present.
Also present, Dr. Henderson Lewis Jr. and Ashley Hillpring. We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, interpretation services are available for today's meeting, and I'll yield to our interpreters.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Lewis. Good evening, everyone. My name is Viet Quyn Pham. I'm a Vietnamese interpreter. I will provide interpreting for this meeting tonight. Xin chào toàn thay quý vị, tôi tên là Việt. Tôi là thông dịch viên. Tôi sẽ thông dịch buổi họp này. Nếu quý vị cần xin cho tôi biết, xin chân thành cảm ơn quý vị. We also have Spanish interpreter. She's on her way. If you need Spanish interpreting assistant, please raise your hand. I will come to you as soon she get here. Thank you.
Buonas tarde, si necesita interpretación en español, por favor levante la mano y le entregamos el aparato. El intérprete ya está bien en camino y le entregamos el aparato en ese momento.
Thank you so much. Moving to 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'll ask my colleagues and those in the room, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to 1.3, adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications at this time? Hearing none. I may have a motion to accept the agenda as is.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Marshall. Board member Marshall is seconded by Ms. Bowdoin. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none. That motion carries. We're now at item two, purpose of the hearing, and I will yield to Board Counsel to walk us through the purpose of this hearing.
Thank you, President Ashley. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed 2021-2022 consolidated budget, including special revenue funds. Anyone wishing to speak with regards to item on the agenda should fill out a public comment card and submit it to the Board Secretary. Cards will be received up to one half hour after the meeting begins. Each person shall be permitted to speak up to two minutes, as established by the chairperson. The parliamentarian will recognize the speaker and give him or her permission to proceed. The speaker shall state the speaker's name and address for the board records. Those who have a group concern are encouraged to select a spokesperson from the group to address the concern. Speakers are expected to be concise as possible and to present their questions and comments in an objective manner in accordance with good taste and decorum and without reference to or insinuations against the board, its members, or the school system employees. Disruptions or disorderly conduct at the public hearing will constitute grounds for the presiding officer to ask security personnel to remove the offender. I'll turn it over to you, President Ashley, for the next item.
Thank you. We're at presentations. At this time, I believe that Mr. Gay will be providing us with the presentation on the consolidated budget.
Good afternoon, board members. Superintendent Lewis, all New Orleans Public Schools stakeholders. This meeting is to review the proposed FY22 general fund and special funds consolidated budget. To that end, for our public process per the Louisiana Government Budget Act, we did initially present the budget at the July 27th meeting. Tonight's public hearing is the other bookend of those public involvement. We also had the budget available on our website, as well as here at the main office, for public inspection during this time. Just a couple of budget highlights overall for fiscal year '22. SIR funds, those are the CARES Act dollars and the ACHIEVE Act dollars. Budget for New Orleans Public Schools for FY22 were just over $30 million. Those funds provide indirect cost reimbursement based on school utilization and claims processing. We have maintained the citywide exceptional needs fund, individual student grants of $700,000 within the budget. Within the general fund, we've analyzed each source of revenue within it and coded expenditures correctly to those and also to assist in our long-term planning for sustainability. Our capital projects funds are still being finalized, and those will be presented to the board in the upcoming months for inclusion into the overall budget plan for this year. And based on the audit, we do have changes in how expenses are coded, especially to our special revenue funds. They all do now appear within the finance section of our department as opposed to direct expenses, as if we were operating a school. Overall, for the year, the general fund revenues and expenditures, which are balanced, are budgeted at $29,154,026. Our total special fund revenue for the year is projected at $49,65,341. And so that makes our total general fund and special revenue budget Overall, I do want to say the MFP pass-through, which is not part of the general fund or special revenue funds, that appears in Fund II, which has a clearing account for us. We do project to pass through $447.8 million to charters within New Orleans, exclusive of type II schools. Overall, our per pupil revenue is decreasing from a projection of $9,423 to $9,069 because of the impact of local sales tax deductions for last year or collections from last year. We are projecting a negative deferred revenue of up to $500 per pupil this year. We do see a rebound, however, starting in FY23, to where we see the per pupil amount increasing to just over $10,000 per pupil. Overall, with that, happy to open it up to the public for public comment on this budget.
Are there any public comment cards?
I have not received any public comment cards, President Ashley.
Okay. Then I will move us to item five. Are there any board comments at this point relative to our consolidated budget?
I'll just thank you publicly, Mr. Gay and your team, for putting together this budget. Obviously, the next year or two are going to be tough for our schools and for our students. And we will continue to work with our schools to make sure that our students are getting the best education, that they deserve the best education. So thank you all for your work on this budget. And just keep moving forward. Thanks.
Mrs. Zerbegon?
Just the one comment would be, I want to thank you all for your work and for the superintendent's special attention to assisting the schools through the situation with the negative deferred revenue. And I know they look forward to what we've been doing to help bridge them through. So I want to thank you for that special attention to that issue. Thanks, y'all.
Any other comments? Hearing none. I think we're at item six. There are no further items on the agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Marshall. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Parker. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. The time now is 5:17 PM. The meeting is adjourned. Calling to order, the Orleans Parish School Board, business meeting for August 19th, 2021. The time now is 5:33 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ashley?
Present.
Mr. Marshall?
Present.
Ms. Bowdoin?
Present.
Mr. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Parker?
Present.
Dr. Wagner Romero?
Present.
Mr. Zerbegon?
Present.
Also present, Dr. Henderson Lewis Jr. and Ashley Hillpring, Board Counsel. We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Interpretation services are available for today's meeting. I'll yield to our interpreters at this time.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, Dr. Lewis, Superintendent. Good evening, everyone. My name is Viet Quyn Pham. I'm a Vietnamese interpreter. I will interpret this meeting. If you need assistance, please raise your hand. Xin chào toàn thay quý vị, tôi tên là Việt. Tôi là thông dịch viên. Tôi sẽ thông dịch buổi họp này. Nếu quý vị cần, xin cho tôi biết. Quý vị có thể giơ tay lên và tôi sẽ đến để phục vụ quý vị. Xin chân thành cảm ơn. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amelia Smith, and I'll be the Spanish interpreter for tonight. Si alguien quisiera interpretación al español, me avisen no más y le damos audífonos para escuchar. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move to 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. We have students here. We're going to welcome Marley Edward and Cameron to come up from Bethune Elementary School to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. At this time, can we have our students from Bethune to come up? All of our students, come on. We'll take all of them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and move to 1.3, adoption of the agenda. At this time, do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda?
Yes, President Ashley. We will be removing item 4.1 from the agenda. We will be moving item 5.1 from the consent agenda due to public comment and move that then to action item 6.4. After item 2.1 on the agenda, we will then move to the consent agenda items 5.2 through 5.5, then action items 6.1 through 6.4. We will be adding action item 6.5, the appointment of members to the Innovation and Stability Committee, then moving back up to item 3.1 and 4.2, then adding item 7.1, an executive session discussion of the character competence, physical and mental health of a person, school board personnel, and then adjourning.
Hearing that, at this time, I will accept a motion to accept the agenda as modified.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mrs. Zerbegon. Is there a second?
You have a second.
I have a second by Mr. Brown. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. At this point, I am going to move to our Board Counsel to take us through consideration of minutes.
It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board adopt the minutes of the July 29th, 2021 board business meeting. May I have a motion to adopt the minutes as provided?
So moved. Waiving the reading of the minutes?
Second.
It's been moved by President Ashley and seconded by Ms. Bowdoin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, President Ashley.
Thank you.
Back to me again.
Yes, back to you. We're now at the consent agenda.
Yes, okay. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board move to approve consent agenda items 5.2 through 5.5 as presented in Globo. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Parker and seconded by President Ashley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Moving now to action item 6.1. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance of Revenue Anticipation Note Series 2021 of the Orleans Parish School Board, State of Louisiana, in a principal amount not to exceed $65,000 in order to provide for non-capital contractual obligations and for stabilized cash flow to charter schools, making application to the state bond commission for consent and authority for such borrowing and providing for other matters with respect to the foregoing. May I have a motion to adopt action item 6.1?
So moved as $65 million.
Oh, I apologize. $65 million. It's been moved by Mr. Zerbegon. Is there a second?
Second. Waiving the reading.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May I get a roll call vote? Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowdoin? Mr. Brown? Mr. Parker? Dr. Wagner Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Zerbegon?
Yes.
The motion carries. Moving to action item 6.2. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board adopt Resolution 13-21, adopting and finalizing the consolidated budget of the general fund and special revenue funds of the Orleans Parish School Board for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2021, and ending on June 30th, 2022. May I have a motion to adopt action item 6.2?
So moved. Waiving the reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Bowdoin and seconded. There's no public comment cards. Is there any board comment? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a roll call vote? Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowdoin?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Wagner Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Zerbegon?
Yes.
The motion carries. And moving to action item 6.3. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board adopt Resolution Number 14-21, aimed at COVID-19 prevention and mitigation strategies at charter schools across the school district by encouraging schools under the jurisdiction of the Orleans Parish School Board to adopt comprehensive communicable disease prevention policies and encouraging the Louisiana Department of Health to require all students entering schools to become fully vaccinated once a COVID-19 vaccine receives full authorization from the United States Food and Drug Administration. May I have a motion to adopt item 6.3?
So moved. Waiving the reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Parker and seconded by Mr. Marshall. We have public comment cards. We have a number of public comment cards on action item 6.3. I would remind everyone, when you come to the podium, please state your full name and your address for the record and limit your comments to two minutes. Our first comment card is from Sabrina Blandell.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina Bland. I reside at 3922 Pogge Street. I'm here on behalf of friends and family who cannot make it here due to the location and the timing of this meeting. Our concern is, why isn't there a virtual option to keep children safe at home from COVID versus having them in the classrooms? And it is my understanding that they are sitting a lot closer than the spaced-out chairs that you guys have here. So if you guys really want to mitigate the virus, what is being done to help the children? Because it's definitely not a virtual option out there. They're not going to answer? Oh, wow. They don't answer? What's their purpose? Are you guys allowed to answer that? That's a serious concern. Got it. So they don't care.
Okay, our next comment card is from Shira Phillips. Ms. Phillips, please, again, when you reach the podium, state your full name and address.
Shira Phillips. I reside at 2100 Ursuline Avenue. Stop playing with our children's lives. The reason why schools exist is to serve the children and the families, to provide an appropriate education. The policies that you all are creating and enforcing are showing blatant disregard for the lives of our children, our families, and our school workers. Schools should not be open at full capacity. Social distancing on these buses and in these classrooms, in these hallways, in these cafeterias is impossible. Children have the fastest-growing positive rates of COVID-19. And when y'all were campaigning, I'm sure that you stood on a platform that said that you would put children first, put their safety first, in order for you to get elected. But what you're doing right now is actually harming our children. Virtual school is what we want. Virtual school is what we need. Virtual school is what we demand. It is in the best interest of our children, our families, and our workers, and in the best interest of New Orleans as a whole. We do not want to lose, not even one life, to this negligence. Okay? All of our children's lives matter, and we want virtual school now.
Our next comment is from Daniel J. Zimmerman.
Daniel J. Zimmerman, 5701 Durbridge Drive, 70131. We can't have proper prevention and mitigation measures without a virtual learning option. There have been several statements made by the school board in defense of returning to schools with no virtual option that I feel are questionable at best. One, they say the kids are safest in schools. Wrong. My kid is safest in my home. My home is an 11% quarantine like my kid's school. You might feel that the measures you're implementing might curb some of the spread, but it's literally not safer than distance learning. Today, at the press conference, they spoke of the 1/3 who didn't come in, but 2/3 did come in with to enroll schools of those who were positive. You say we can come back to 100% safety measures because we had little, no transmission last year. Wrong. This ignores two major variables. We didn't have Delta variant last year, and we had virtual learners last year who made social distancing more easily. Learning loss requires us to go back to in-person, is what y'all say. My son got a zero for his leap test last year because in the middle of leap testing, we saw that they were not implementing social distancing or masking properly. Because of that, we pulled him out for his safety. So he got a zero. That zero is learning loss because you didn't get to count it. How many other parents pulled their kids from their leap test or even didn't even let them go at all because they were concerned for their safety? So I'm questioning the so-called learning loss, and how much of this learning loss is there people that opted out? Finally, the school board posted on a Facebook article about yellow fever, saying how back then, we were resilient. We had 200 child deaths, but we bounced back. This tells me that there is an acceptable amount of deaths that the school board is willing to accept that is not acceptable to me. I fear that the modus operandi here is that we're going to wait and see. Wait and see how much spread goes, and then react then. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Please let us distance learn at our enrolled schools.
Our next comment card is from Aretha Lewis.
Aretha Lewis, 3407 Napoleon Avenue. I came to ask us if we're going to have a realistic conversation about mitigating risks, if we use this room as an example to do a comparative analysis. There is not a classroom in this city that is big enough to provide this amount of social distancing. There is not a classroom in this city with sneeze guards in between each of the students. As Mr. Zimmerman just said, that article that you posted the other day was not only insensitive, but it was downright inhumane to suggest that we could simply bounce back. Because if we lose one teacher, that's one teacher too many. And if it's possible, if you honestly, in your hearts, believe that if we lose a child, we could simply bounce back, I propose that we start with you and your families first. If your children are not being subjected to these learning environments, when they have 3,000 children quarantined and teachers who are fearful of not only losing their jobs, but losing their lives. If you can consider that that's something we'll bounce back from, I want you to put yourselves up first. If we have to send lambs up to slaughter, you go first, and we'll bounce back.
Our next comment is from Sandra Hester. Sandra, 18 Wheeler Hester.
And this lady, even right here in this room we're in, is not disinfecting properly in front of all of us. So, like the children say, if you don't know who I am, you better ask somebody. Now, with Katrina, y'all killed and abandoned as many people of color at the Superdome and the convention center, but you couldn't kill us all. Now you're putting the children. And I don't know why the teachers are even cooperating. So I want to tell the parents, they can't do this without your cooperation. I wouldn't dare. I'm glad my children are grown, but I wouldn't dare send them in any of these schools. So the only one child is too many. One teacher is too many. And I love the way people came up here to ask questions, and the board just sat there and looked at them, including the superintendent. So I haven't been here in a decade, but I see that not much has changed. Don't send your children to school to die.
Our next comment card is from a person with the last name, I believe, K.A.R.G. or K.A.R.Q. K.A.R.A., I apologize. Please state your full name and address for the record.
Kaba Brown, 1701 Hudson Drive. How come Lusha Ben Franklin have virtual learning, but our kids don't? Is it because of the neighborhood they're in?
It's mostly white.
How come they can tell us, "Come get our kids as soon as possible", but can't tell us why we're coming to get our kids? And not only they're telling us to come get our kids as soon as possible, they're telling it to the kids, well, these kids are having panic attacks, and they have mental stress issues. Are we going to stop school in October once they finish with the one body count?
Our next comment card is from Dr. Ashanta Wyatt.
Dr. Ashanta Wyatt, 4167 Harvey, Louisiana, 70058. Community members, including parents, teachers, and community stakeholders are essentially begging our school leaders for a virtual option due to the dire effects of COVID-19. Begging is the operable word there. So ignore the concerns of your constituents sends a dismissive message that you don't care about our humanity or that of our children. If you don't care about our humanity, how can we entrust you to educate and safeguard our children? In order to ensure our comprehensive communicable disease prevention policy, the policy must include a virtual learning option for our children, faculty, staff, and community. While we understand in-person instruction provides for the most enriched learning experience, a virtual learning option will expand and support COVID-19 prevention and mitigation strategies while we continue to navigate the uncertainty of COVID and its variants. You know, I find it kind of strange that you figured out a way to mandate the vaccine, but you still have not figured out a way to mandate that the 38 or 39 CMOs follow your directives. What I would implore you to do is to not leave it up to 38 or 39 bodies to decide what is best for our children and do the job that we pay you to do. You are our school board. You are our superintendent. So I think that you should do what we are asking you to do. Nobody's saying, "Let's get rid of in-person instruction", because I'm an educator, a certified qualified educator, traditionally educated at the university, not somebody that just walked up off the street and wants to pretend to educate our children. My doctorate is real. You can look it up. I don't call myself Dr. Wyatt because it sound good. I call myself that because I've earned that right. And I want you to respect my degree and respect my opinion professionally. So if you can mandate the vaccine, you can also mandate a holistic virtual learning option that comes from you, dictated to them in the best interest of our children. I don't think that's asking too much since you think 200 people dying is feasible.
Our next public comment card is from Arntice Coward.
Arntice Coward, 3616 Music Street.
Hello to our old useless school board members and our new useless school board members. And I say that because when you can have a press conference about a virtual option, it shows that you know what people are concerned with, but you still could not make it an agenda item to make sure people knew that there was something that you was concerned with. Now to say that, to piggyback what she said, if you can mandate a vaccine, which you can't force them to do, which is y'all cop out y'all always use, you can't force them to do anything, you only can suggest they do it, then you could have easily mandated a virtual option which gave people who wanted to keep their children home a choice, just as easily as you've done this. But this is about you guys pretending to do the right thing instead of actually doing the right thing. Now here's the thing, my mother had six kids, okay, and she had no car. So she would never be able to navigate this unique system we have. You know, the 100% charter that you are now leaving and going to brag about Henderson Lewis that you created here. A mess is what you created for mothers who have six children and have to navigate 39 boards with 39 protocols and 39 policies. And this is the time that you guys should be stepping up to help the people you begged to represent. That is, that is not too much to ask and it's not too much to demand, and it's not even a hard thing for you guys to do. You just seem to always want to battle the people you should be serving while serving the people who pay you. This is a disease that can kill our children and you guys are still playing politics. I don't mind talking to any of y'all, you guys any day whenever you show with your actions that you're going to do right. I would never sit down with any of you guys long as you're still acting the way you do and not performing and doing your job for us. That's it. This is the time to cop out was when you asked us to vote for you. Don't cop out now and say your hands are tied.
Our next comment is from Ashana Begard.
Ashana Begard, 1840 St. Thomas Street, New Orleans, Louisiana. I came here today because I have two children that attend these schools. Of course, I'm also an advocate. Of course, I would like to ask y'all questions, but it seems useless because you're not going to answer them. So let me tell you this. What is happening in the schools right now is willful negligence. Willful negligence is a suit item. I am telling parents who have children on the bus, three to a seat, who have schools that do not have custodial staff, who have schools that are not disinfecting bathrooms, hallways, or floors, to contact us with their cases. Because if their children become infected or exposed to COVID, even if they're exposed, if their child is exposed, that means the household is exposed, that means parents are missing work. Parents in this city cannot afford to miss work because of the poverty. It's the difference between feeding their children and having a roof over their head. So when you expose children needlessly to a deadly virus, you are taking food out of their siblings' mouths and their parents' mouths and possibly jeopardizing them having housing. So I need you to understand the words willful negligence. Because not only will the state be sued, you'll be sued, the schools will be sued, you Henderson Lewis will be sued. Because this is America, we can sue everybody. And if you perform willful negligence and children and families die because of your willful negligence, trust me, we will win that lawsuit. So I need you to act before the group of attorneys we are gathering has to act. I beseech you. Because we've been asking you to do the right thing for years very politely, so it's not all that is over. So y'all either make a move or we will. Thank you.
Our next comment card is from Latandra Brister.
Latandra Brister, 7001 Lawrence Road. I'm gonna say what she says, stop playing with our children. For one, these buses is overcrowded. Corona was, Delta is way worse than Corona. And I'm gonna say this, my daughter and my son, I think they did good on virtual than they did in school. Two, stop bribing, stay your staff, stop bribing these children. On what they can't do because they're not vaccinated, because you still could get COVID being vaccinated. It's money over our children. Everybody say what they gonna do when they not in a seat, but when they get in a seat, they don't do a thing. Another thing, we don't even have buses. What about people that don't have transportation? Our kids can't even get to school. So what's wrong with virtual? I think it's good, and I think more teachers put more effort in virtual than they did in a school because they can't brush our children off. So I'm gonna say this, I demand virtual. Oh, we gonna get together and we gonna take our children out of these schools and what fun is y'all gonna have then? That's all I gotta say.
Our next comment card is from Morgana King.
Hi, my name is Morgana King, 2024 Lamarck Street, New Orleans, 70114. I emailed all of you at the beginning of school asking for a virtual option. I heard back from a couple of you, I know a couple of you. This is very important. Louisiana has the worst Delta outbreak in the country. We are not leading the nation in any smart way, we're doing the wrong things. Why did I torture my family homeschooling my children last year where we all went nuts and it was so hard? And then now that it's actually super dangerous for our children, we're gonna just go send them to school? Throw all of that work away and say that was worth nothing? Go ahead and go, who cares? Just go get COVID. Why, why was, why? It doesn't make any sense. I tried to keep my kids home from school. I thought, I'll just keep them home. Don't send them. Keep your kids home, it's not safe. The school said, we're gonna take them off the roster, your kids will lose their place in school. You have no option. They have, they have to come, Child Protective Service is going to come. You are not allowed to not put your kids in school.
But we can put them in the cemetery?
Yeah. I suggested another option. It looks like in all likelihood Mardi Gras is going to be canceled. How many days of school is that? Take all of those school days that we spend on parties upfront now and close the schools. Think about what message we could send to the whole world and say Louisiana decided kids are more important than parties. We don't need to save school days for Mardi Gras. It's not going to happen unless everybody wants it to happen and we could stop the surge now. Take control.
Ma'am, your time is up.
And stop it.
Our next comment card is from Bridget Martin. Ms. Martin, please state your full name and address and keep your comments to two minutes.
My name is Bridget B Speaks Martin. I live at 2356 Comet Street. I am a parent, a activist, and a product of not this Orleans Parish school system. I want to make that clear. I find it extremely odd that you seem to want to pretend like you're doing us a favor when you let us know that there's a positive outbreak. Because Berman Elementary School has one of the biggest outbreaks in Algiers. Now you're pushing a vaccine on teenagers. If they're athletes, they now have to be vaccinated. Oh, because it's the extracurricular activities. So take the option away from a scholarship if you don't get the vaccine. But children that are 12 and under can't get a vaccine, but you choose to open a school for children 12 and under. Make that make sense to me. But then you call the parent to get their child, and I show up as a godparent to get the child in the office, staff don't even know why I'm there because you feel like you don't have the right to let the entire staff know that there's a positive outbreak in their school. So you quarantine a child for 14 days with the classroom only, even though that positive child rode the bus, used the cafeteria with other people's children, that you feel like you don't have to tell them that there was a positive outbreak? So let's quarantine just that classroom for 14 days with no schoolwork. So that's two weeks of work that they, that they are missing just to turn around and send them back to school? And if there's another outbreak, what, send them back home for 14 more days? And that's what you're telling me is your best option for me who pay you? Make that make sense to me when you come begging me for your vote? When your body language say I am the best option, but you telling me this is the best option for my child? So you're gonna send children to school that's 12 and under that can't get vaccine, vaccinated? And the only option you have is send them home for 14 days and send them back to your school that's not being cleaned? That's not being properly socially distanced? And you giving a teacher 35 students in a small classroom but only gave us 14 seats?
Our next comment card is from De'arnika Williams.
Good evening, my name is Angela Kinlaw, 8949 Jeanette Street, New Orleans, 70118. I want to speak to the revolutionary spirit and the spirit of resistance that exist in the children, the families, the teachers, the educators, from bus drivers, school secretaries, teachers in the classroom, teacher assistants, all servant leaders of children. I'm speaking to you right now because even though we are in this place and we're speaking to a board, the power is with the people. All of the solutions have already been provided today. The people have spoke and the people have made it very clear what makes most sense and what's logical. We have to decide today based on what they decide to do or not do, what we will do next. We always talk about no justice, no peace. What that means is we understand that we cannot get justice with an unjust system. So until there is justice, we had to make sure that there's no peace. It's an understanding right here and now that every time people talk about choice, what they really mean is they're casting an illusion for who gets choice and who does not. We spent over a year and a half preparing, as has already been said, how to engage in a virtual learning experience, an optional learning experience, other than just coming to the classroom under these conditions. Well, if we were really serious about equity, COVID or no COVID, there would be a virtual option for our children. Our children would already have access to technology. Our children would already have access to the internet. We would be doing that despite the conditions. But now we have the conditions that are requiring us to do it and choosing not to is contradictory to everything we say we believe for children. But the power is with the people. So we know at the end of the day that when it comes to the children and what we need, we could decide to sit here and beg a board, or we could decide to give them hell. Because it is important that everybody understands that our children are what we have. You all say that you believe in the children, we're going to know after tonight, but we've already known what it is. So we could decide to live under the illusion that these are the people who care about our children, or we could force the hand. It's important for us to understand too, that there's a false ideology of white supremacy that shows up in spaces like this. It makes people feel like they only have an option.
Ms. Kinlaw, your time is up.
That we can only choose one thing or another. But the reality is the choice on behalf of our children has to be the first priority. When we see all of you out in the streets, you say you believe in children. These are the people who believe in the children, and we say we're here for the children. So today, we say, safety first. Safety first.
Safety first.
Safety first.
Safety first.
Safety first.
Safety first.
Dignity.
Our next public comment card is from Wanda Romain. Please remember to state your full name and address for the record and keep your comments to two minutes.
Wanda Romain, 4459 Woodland Drive. Welcome back after 18 months to the same lunacy that we left back in 2020. When in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political or educational bands which have connected them to another and to assume the powers of the earth, the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and nature's God entitle them. A decent respect to the opinions of the public before you. I am a retired educator. I have no children of my own in these schools, but you can't tell me that I can't be concerned about anybody in here who has a child in these schools. Now I said I was gonna be calm, but I guess God said no. So here we go. You mean to tell me there are four parishes in Louisiana who have started instituting virtual learning? There is money, and I don't know why this conversation, conversation keep coming back to money, but it does. There is money available to accommodate parents whom they elected you.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Because I did not elect a representative for District Four, hey, to accommodate the parents that you said you would protect their kids. How dare you sit up here and look at me with those blank stares and say that you care? And to use history to say that 200 children was an acceptable loss that they could bounce back from? Not no children that go to McDonough, 35, or any of the schools in my district, but let me say this, y'all have three years left until it is election time again. Watch them. And if I, and if I get to write the history of this chapter of all these parish school board, you best believe I'm gonna remember this, I'm gonna teach it to the kids, because this is what they're learning from you, that all they are to you is a paycheck. Give these parents what they elected you to do.
Our next comment card is from Jacqueline Kennedy. Okay. And after Ms. Kennedy, we will have Ms. Lakita Green.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm touching this, but I didn't see nobody Lysol it after anybody. Okay. Okay. I go to church and I go to funeral homes and we've been Lysoling down, so y'all should have a can of Lysol right here. Now listen, everybody, my name is Jacqueline Kennedy, I'm from Uptown Third Wall. Listen, first of all, we all know that prevention is always better than the cure, any day for anything that we have, even our own sickness and our own bodies. If we prevent it from happening, we'll be cured before it happen, all right? So listen, I am full, look, ain't nobody want children in school more than me. I used to be a teaching in Orleans Parish school substitute, intervention specialist, all of that, okay? And I would love the children to be in there, but I do not want our children dying on these streets, and I don't want them dying in these classrooms. Safety first. Children's lives matter, our lives matter, and that's what we need to focus on. I heard everybody speak, and I'm in agreement with everybody, what everybody said. And listen, it's not only the children, but you got other staff, not just teachers. You got custodians, you got cafeteria workers, you got people, parents come in, volunteer or whatever, whatever the situation, and it's not sanitized enough. And how you gonna force our hands as And how you gonna force our hands as parents to make our children go in there when the virus is worse this time than it was last time? Y'all hear it on the news? One child life is too many to lose. One child life is too many to lose. So, and I want to thank y'all for putting the TV on just now cause I've been saying, I've been hearing stuff, but I ain't been seeing stuff. There has no picture. I wanted to see what was happening, okay? But they just now clicked it on, so I appreciate that. Um, and I am definitely for virtual learning. Maybe the children cannot be one-on-one with the people, with the parents and with the teachers. And we understand that. But we have to, we have to look at life. Life matters. One child life dying, we don't want that. So I'd rather my child be at home learning on that computer. And I know it's about money. Y'all don't want to give us no money, that's what it is. Cause they had to pay us for food stamps, huh? They had to send us money taking care of our children. But guess what? Y'all got the money and the budget? Put it where it need to go at. But y'all need to remember this. Children's lives matter and their lives not just matter to y'all to come here to teach them, but their lives matter for them to live out throughout their lives. So y'all remember that these parents have spoken. I'm a community activist. I, I'm everything, you understand? I got one child in school, but I got two that graduated from this school system, the public school. Even myself from Boca T. Washington, Class 83. So listen up. I hope and pray, y'all may, I'm not fussing at y'all, but I'm getting on you, okay? Now listen to me. Look, look, but this one, my point is, these children's lives matter. And I could, I could cuss, fuss and do all that, but I want y'all to understand. When y'all make these decisions, don't worry, don't be thinking like, oh, one or two, I know I'm up. One or two lives or however many lives have lost. We don't want to lose no lives, okay? Thank y'all very much. Alright, God bless y'all. And, and oh, I want to say this. There was no advertisement that this meeting was taking place. I heard it on the news, but they did not give the location and they did not give the time. At 6 o'clock, when 6:30 came back, they didn't even say it again, cause I was listening for it. So we need better advertisement. Everybody ain't Googling everything. So put it on the news, 86 and 4, whatever channel you watch. Thank y'all. God bless y'all. And good to see you. I remember you way back when, when we used to go on Calerac Street.
Our next, our next comment card is from Lakita Green. After Ms. Green, we will have Serena Born. Lakita Green? Okay, we'll come back to her. Our next comment card is from Serena Born.
Alright, I'll take my two minutes. Um, oh, I'm Serena Born, 2J Street, New Orleans. I'll take my two minutes, even though I know that like the charter school representatives bribing y'all take a good deal longer than that when they meet with you. So, uh, I'm, I'm here in memory of my friend, Nat Clark. Nat Clark, uh, passed away this year. And they were, uh, they were an education justice activist. And they came to these meetings. And two years ago, in 2019, Nat said to y'all, "I'm not here to appeal to the morality of the board because I know that they have none if they're able to stay there looking stony-faced and uncaring while parent after parent tells stories of how the school system has failed their kids." That was in 2019. That was in 2019, right? And we know that the pandemic exacerbates all the same problems of misleadership and misrepresentation that we have been having, right? And we knew back then, just like we do now, that change does not come from you, it comes from us. And we know that things are going wrong in education during the pandemic for the same reason that things go wrong anywhere during the pandemic. They're being run for profit at the cost of students' lives, at the cost of kids' lives, at the cost especially of black lives. And as a tutor, um, as an online tutor, professional online tutor, I get my students because they are afraid of what, what can happen to them. They want some kind of education that isn't going to kill them or threaten them, right? And that includes immunocompromised students, asthmatic students, right? All kinds of students that would be put, that whose lives would be under threat because of y'all's failure to provide a virtual option. So we say when New Orleans youth are under attack, what do we do? When New Orleans youth are under attack, what do we do? When New Orleans kids are under attack, what do we do?
Our next comment card is from Jewel Prim. After Jewel Prim, we will have a comment from Jess Martell.
I'll give a mic to you. Jewel Prim, 7800 St. Charles, um, 70118. Um, as public servants and via your track record in this role, the people of this city, as you have just heard, are very much so aware that this school board makes decisions with only greed in your eyes. Um, I'm imploring you today to pull a crumb of your conscience out from under yourself, these comfy seats, uh, to stop the current sacrifice of children, teachers, workers, and all of their families via exposure to COVID-19. The current mitigation processes and practices are not stopping the spread of COVID amongst children in the Orleans Parish School Board. I'm just gonna repeat some headlines to you that you already know. Um, cases are at all-time high. 3,000 children and counting are quarantined. The hospitals have breached capacity within the state. I don't understand where the misconnection is happening where that means that children need to be taken out of schools. Anyways, um, there is blood already on your hands from all the things you have done before and decided not to do and currently today. So, um, once again, we all must scramble to do your job and save the lives of our children because you won't. Virtual schooling with more than adequate support than before for all the resources that are needed for them to be, them being the children that you're supposed to care about, right? Um, to be successful while at home are paramount. So that means if people don't have Wi-Fi, make sure that they have the Wi-Fi. If their computers don't work, you got money. Instead of getting your new suit, make sure that their computers work, right? Alright, cool. So, your concern sickening, it's our money. It's always been, right? Exactly. Your concern sickening as it is is how much money will be lost if students are back-to-distance learning. We're here to tell you today, your only concern is saving the lives of these children and making sure that they stay alive, right? Cause now people are already exposed. People are already in the hospital. We're like praying to God that they get out, right? I'm, I'm sure that also, because there's so many of you, you've also experienced this fear. So there won't be any money to be made from attendance if you don't let all of the children get sick here, like if you let all the children get sick to your negligence. So we say virtual learning now. Virtual learning now. Before it's too late. Thank you.
Our next comment card is from Jess Martell. After Jess Martell, we will have Kiva Griffin-Clark. Kevin Griffin-Clark.
Hi, my name is Jess Martell. I live at 2102 Audubon Street. I'm a community member. I'm also here to comment on your all's treatment of COVID, your like supposed management and prevention. You're not managing or preventing anything by hinging this entire thing on a possibility when the FDA approves a vaccine for children? You have kids in hospitals. You have kids who are sick. You have kids who are quarantining. You are not giving families the opportunity to prepare for childcare, to prepare for being virtual. You're dragging your feet until you have to go virtual. You're not giving kids the possibility to learn. You're not giving kids the possibility to be safe. Kids have been traumatized this past year. Kids have been at home. They've been stuck, they've been scared, they've been confused, they've lost family, they've lost loved ones. Families have lost so many people. And you don't give a shit. You're here dragging your feet, waiting for kids to die. Kids are in hospitals. Hospitals are filled up. We don't have any more options and you're dragging your goddamn feet. Y'all need to make a virtual option now. We don't have a choice. You saw this last year. Why did families have to quarantine this whole time? Only for you to put, put people at risk now. Why don't you care? Why are you sitting here like that? You need to have an NTI option immediately. You have teachers who are in hospitals. You have kids who are in hospitals. People are sick, people are dying, workers are tired. That's all I have.
Our next comment card is from Jess Martell, followed by Kevin Griffin-Clark. Oh, I apologize. Kevin Griffin-Clark. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know I look good, but I ain't no woman. Kevin Griffin-Clark, New Orleans, Louisiana. Um, it's interesting to sit up here before the majority of you because you are now the newly elected here. And, uh, there's a few things I want to speak to you all about. And I'm gonna speak to a few of you directly. Mr. Holden Parker. Um, when you ran for this office, and please don't take this, this is not any, you know, you ran for this office, you told a great story about your child caring about their black friends in their schools. Majority of the children in OPSB are black. So does that care still linger now? Does that care still go? Mr. Ramirez, you are a double minority with these children in these schools. Do you still care? Do you give a damn about these children? You speak, oh my God. Proceed.
I, I, look. No, and I, and we won't, we'll give you your, your one minute back. So yes. And I have also been the only board member to come out publicly in support of a virtual option in this city.
Proceed, thank you, sir. Thank you.
And I have also been working very hard behind the scenes trying to figure out how to get legislators and Bessie all together because it is up to the education leaders and our government officials to figure out how to do it right.
Thank you, sir. For that, for that, I say thank you. Uh, I lost a few seconds, but I'll take my time. So, nah, I, I got, I got my time. Uh, Ms. Katie, as the only woman on this board and a mother, correct? The nurturer on this board. Do these children matter? Do you care enough to make sure that these children have the best option? Which for some of them should be virtual? To make sure that it's not more than 3,000 other children? Uh, nah, I'm, I'm not gonna even deal with them. That's old news. Um, and sadly have lost all my respect cause you were a former educator. You educated my mother. You educated my aunts. And you have sadly lost your morals. And it is terrible and it is horrible, sir. Now I'm gonna respect, like, as I tell Mr. Marshall all the time, even when he tried to fight me in front of my church. But luckily, my grandmother taught me better than to deal with my elders like that. Now as a man, I wanted to deal with it a different way. To my good church member, uh, Mr. Henderson Lewis. You can run all you want. Can't hide. 1 Timothy 5 and 8. For any of those who refuse to take care of their loved ones, relatives, is worse than a non-believer and has lost all faith. God watches you. God has no faith in you, sir. You are worse than a non-believer. You can run the beacon light all you want.
Our next comment card, our, excuse me. Our next comment card is from Stacy Howard, to be followed by De'ranika Williams.
My name is Stacy Howard. I reside at 4125 Maple Leaf Drive, New Orleans, Louisiana, 7013.
Real, real quick, I'm sorry with the noise, I couldn't hear your name. Could you repeat the name for me?
Stacy Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
I'm here in regards to my kids. I'm their voice. I'm gonna tell you how y'all don't. My mama got a call today at 2 o'clock. I don't need a mic. She got a call today at 2 o'clock. My daughter has been exposed this morning to somebody who had COVID. They called again, a bus driver had COVID. So you mean to tell me, you put these kids back into a classroom with other kids after they've been exposed? What happened to the isolation room? You took it and made it into a art room? You serious? So my child have to sit with this exposed kid? Plus get on the bus again with a bus driver? Then you call my mama, come pick up my child. My child getting on the bus. She don't know what's going on. She don't know at all. All you could do is give my baby a piece of paper and say, I see you on the 30. Baby, what's wrong? Mama more here. What she here for? I get on the bus to go home. You done went call my child off the bus. You still have yet to tell her what's going on. My baby come home, it's 5 o'clock. If I wasn't a parent that sat down and talked to her, she wouldn't even know because y'all done put her back in the classroom. She don't know she's been exposed to nobody. But y'all say y'all really give.
Okay, our next comment card is from De'ranika Williams, followed by our last comment card on this action item, Lakita Green. De'ranika Williams? Or Lakita Green?
These children came out of my body. And I'm not gonna expose them to no known risks.
Okay. Alright, there are no further public comment cards on this action item. I'll turn it over to, to Board President Ashley.
Yeah, at this moment, I, I'd like to make sure that we're able to hear from the administration on this matter.
There's been a motion and a second on action item 6.3. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me.
Just go through.
We need to do a roll call.
Mr. Ashley? Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowden? Mr. Brown?
I have a child in this system and my voice will be heard, either voluntarily or involuntarily. But you're not gonna shut these people up when they're losing children to a virus that you could prevent. So you shut up.
Mr. Brown?
You shut up.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Wagner Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Zervadon?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And you're a damn liar.
All right, the time now is 6:34 PM. May I have a motion to move into executive session? I have a motion by Ms. Bowden. Is there a second? I have a second by Mr. Marshall. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. We're now in executive session. All right, calling back to order, the August 19, 2021, Orleans Parish School Board Business Meeting. The time now is 7:07 PM. May I have a roll call, please? I am present.
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 Here.
Present.
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 Thank you so much. At this time, I'll yield to our Board Counsel to take us through our executive item, our executive session item, excuse me, 7.1.
Thank you, President Ashley. During executive session, there was a discussion of the character, professional competence, and physical or mental health of a person, school board personnel. There's nothing else reported during executive session.
Thank you. Board Counsel, you gonna take us back through?
Yes.
Yep, let's go ahead.
And we are now at action item 6.5, 6.4, which was previously listed as 5.1, the new policy GAMFD mandatory COVID vaccination policy. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approve new policy GAMFD.
So move. Wait for the reading of the resolution.
Second. It's been moved by President Ashley and seconded by Mr. Parker. We do have board comment, or sorry, we do have public comment, the public comment from Arthris Cowart. Okay, and we have a public comment card from Ashana Begard. Okay, is there any board comment?
I have a comment, Board Counsel. I just wanted, on this item, Superintendent Lewis, I want to commend you on working with the board to bring this policy forward. I think, you know, student safety is at the forefront of everybody's minds right now. And sending a signal to our schools to, about the importance of vaccination by encouraging New Orleans Public Schools staff to get vaccinated, I think is critically important. And the exact message we should be sending the kids to, we should be sending to keep our kids safe. I also want to thank the schools that have already stepped up to mandate vaccination for their teachers. Vaccination is our way out of the pandemic. They are not only asking their teachers to get vaccinated, they are hosting vaccine clinics every single day. I know that we've got schools in my district that had vaccine clinics yesterday. We've got some that have vaccine clinics coming up on Thursday. That's our way out, and I appreciate you for taking this bold step, Superintendent.
I just want to clarify that we're on action item 6.4, which is the new policy GAMFD mandatory COVID-19 vaccination. It's been moved by President Ashley and seconded by Mr. Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. President Ashley, we are now at item 3.1.
Nope, we are at item 6.5.
Committee assignment?
We are now at action item 6.5, which is the appointment of members to the Innovation and Stability Committee. It's been recommended that we appoint Mr. Marshall, Mr. Zervidan, and Mr. Parker as members of the Innovation and Stability Committee of the Orleans Parish School Board. May I have a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by President Ashley and seconded by Ms. Bowden. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. And now to action item, or item 3.1 on the agenda.
At this time, we will yield to the Superintendent for Superintendent's agenda.
Thank you, President Ashley, and good evening, everyone. For my report this evening, we heard a lot of comments from our families on this evening. First thing, I wanted to remind our parents and our community and NOLA Public Schools, any student and family that feels that at this time, a student is not able to participate in virtu, excuse me, in-person learning. We have a process, and as I've shared for the last probably three, four weeks, the process, first of all, is to be able to go to your child's school and receive a form that goes to your medical doctor. There's about 33 different reasons from the CDC that will qualify a student to participate in virtual and bring that form back to your child's school after it's signed by a physician. And really, for our families, we know that this is a very, very trying time. And our schools are here to work with our students as well as our families. And I know, yes, last school year, our schools had an in-person and virtual option. And families were able to just simply opt in. We know that there was a lot of learning loss, and we've heard, and my chief operation officer is gonna come up and share some information on this evening, but we do know the best place for our children, after we make sure safety is taken care of, is in the classroom with their teachers and their friends, receiving the best possible education that they can. So again, I know there's a lot of concern that we've heard tonight around virtual learning. There is an option, there's a process that our families must go through. And if you just go to our website on our landing page, that form is available. So again, there is a process and an opportunity for virtual learning for our families that need it. But you must first go through the process. So again, I'm gonna ask Tiffany Delcor to come up and just share, as we were listening on this evening, there's just some things we want to just share to make sure it's very, very clear in reference to the mitigation measures that we have in place and the safety protocols as we, once again, our third school year continues to combat COVID-19 in our community. So at this time, Tiffany, if you want to just come here.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Thank you for this opportunity to clarify. I want to start by saying that we rely on the advice of our medical professionals and our medical advisors in our city and our state. We lean on them and we rely on them. We talk with them daily and the advice is the same. Our students should be in school. We can open schools despite the Delta variant because we have the tools that we didn't have last August. This year, we have unprecedented access to vaccinations and access to routine testing in our schools. For medically vulnerable students, there is distance learning options available today in all NOLA Public Schools, and it is available throughout our programs. As for our mitigation plans, our vaccination efforts are working. This summer, we vaccinated 1,000 students, and we're continuing these efforts throughout the fall. The majority of our schools are mandating vaccines for their staff and for students participating in extracurricular activities. We also have one of the largest routine testing programs in all of public schools in the state of Louisiana. Last week, we doubled our testing efforts in the second week of school operations to provide 1,000 tests in our schools in one week with a 2% positive test rate. We transparently provide the data on the number of positive cases and quarantine numbers in our school system. Yes, the numbers are high, and they're the higher than they've been in the past. This reflects the level of community spread in our greater New Orleans community and not the level of spread in our individual schools. Our quarantine totals do not represent COVID-19 spreading in our schools. However, the exact opposite. They reflect the protective measures we are taking to prevent the spread in our schools. We know that this is an incredibly difficult and anxious time for our students, our staff, and our families. But we are relying on the citizens and the guidance of our medical community, the same community that is responsible for keeping us safe. We've all learned that the one thing that is constant in this ever-changing pandemic is the need for constant evaluation, and we will do that. We will do that guided by the science and those in our medical community regarding how to keep our students and families safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delcor. And Mr. President, this concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you so much. At this time, I would like to go to presentations and yield to my colleague, Dr. Wagner Romero.
Good evening, everyone. Let me just get my bearings real quick.
Yeah, please, Ms. Begard, please.
Okay.
I am not here. Or upstairs while I'm here. Children live with grandparents, nieces. A lot of people are stranded to a lot of houses. When one child gets COVID, that child cannot go to a hotel and quarantine themselves. Their whole family becomes exposed. To where the school buses are because of the lack of transportation, and I know you guys are familiar with what's going on with the buses right now. They have these kids reach to a bus. They do not have bus monitors. We have been saying for bus monitors. For the last, I don't know, 10 years, but there are no bus monitors to make sure that small children are keeping masks on. The schools are not spending the money to sanitize the bathrooms. You don't believe me? Go to the schools in your districts, ask the children if their bathrooms are clean. Ask the children if they have soap. Ask them if the floors are clean. Ask them what is going on in their buses. Are children wearing masks? Are children wearing masks in school? Are they handing out masks and sanitizer? You don't have to take my word for it. Do your jobs, go talk to the children and parents, because it's clear you don't believe me. But I am telling you the truth. I'm not here for my health. I'm not here because it feels good. I have high blood pressure. I do not want to be here having my high blood pressure go up. What I want you to do is do your job. I shouldn't have to make this argument. If you actually went to the schools, talked to the children, talked to the parents, I wouldn't be here. Go to Erase the Board's website and see how many parent comments are on it. I understand we, they do, we do talk about y'all. But we talk about you because your inefficiency at doing your jobs. If you did your jobs, we would parade you, we would be so happy. But no, I don't get paid for this, and parents and teachers and children call me. My daughter goes to Morris Jeff High School, and she doesn't want to go in the bathroom because it stinks to high heaven. There is no way during a COVID pandemic, there should be a stinky bathroom. Not all day, because that bathroom should be being cleaned every hour, hour. Children are going in, touching things, and then other children are going behind them. That is why the schools are not safe. Do your jobs, please. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, again, I will yield back to my colleague, Dr. Wagner Romero.
Ms. Arthris Cowart?
Thank you. I'm Arthris Cowart, 3060 Music Street. Um, you guys, I've calmed down a bit, but I haven't calmed down about what we are here for. And what we are here for is always about the kids. And just as she said, I know Erase the Board says a lot of things about you guys, and it's another personal. It's always about what's happening in the financials, in the buildings, with the parents. The way parents, you guys, parents call you guys all the time and can't get through to anyone. They call the school, and the school will tell them, well, get to the board, and people on the board, not this board, their personal board, and they can't get into anyone. Henderson Lewis noticed. He had gave me his personal cellphone number a few years ago. And I ended up to the last resort where I would literally give his personal cellphone number out to people that called me. As Ashana said, I don't get paid for this. I've never gotten paid for this. I used to be an educator. I am a convicted felon because of some things that happened regarding my tenure as a teacher before Katrina. But what I can say is this, I was convicted, I was held accountable, and I did my time. What is killing me is that people are constantly doing illegal, unethical, unconstitutional, inhumane things to parents and children, and it just lasts one news cycle. And it's gone, and they're never charged, they're never held, what do you guys like to say, accountable. There's no transparency because there's chaos. And everybody is passing the buck. Every board is telling them to call this person, and that person say, call this person. How is a parent supposed to navigate a system that is with 39 systems when you guys are here? And when the things are most important, such as this, you can say, whether you can actually make them do it or not, you can embarrass them and stand up and do what we do, you guys, what we do them. We can say, listen, every time I talk about you, I'm gonna talk about what you're not willing to do and what you're not doing. That's what you do. You have a voice sitting on this board. Stop saying what you can't do, and if you can't do it, be so loud about wanting to do it that can't nobody accuse you of just not wanting to. Our kids need protection from you before COVID happened, and they definitely need protection from you now that it has. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other cards?
No, President Ashley, there are no further comment cards on action item 5.1.
Okay, Dr. Wagner Romero, you ready?
I've been ready, thank you. So before, so we have a presentation today by a group called Excel, and they are working on graduation, they're a Graduation Pathway Coalition. And before they come up, I want to express why this is important to me. As the only gay and brown kid who grew up in predominantly black neighborhoods in New Orleans, because people don't like to give me credit for being a New Orleanian, so I'm gonna say it out loud, for being the only brown kid who didn't speak English, schooling was very difficult for me. So for the $430 that come into my bank account to be on the school board, I take this work very personally, despite that. So I want to say that first. Second of all, I deem it extremely important for us to work together with organizations and groups that are trying to innovate and revitalize our education system. So we talk, we have, we have a long way to go as an education system altogether in this country. I am very fortunate to be working alongside this group, Excel, who's trying to find pathways for our vulnerable brown community, our limited English community, limited English proficient community, so that they too can have opportunities to graduate and thrive and succeed in society. So I get emotional about this because it is so important to me, and I'm so grateful for champions like you all that are doing this work for people like me. So without further ado, go ahead.
Evening. Thank you for your time today. We are here as members of the Excel Coalition. Excel standing for Expanded Criteria to Graduation for English Learners in Louisiana.
My name is Churuba Chavez. I'm an EL consultant with Consultantola.
And hi, my name is Emma Merrill. I'm the director of La Sierra's Academy, which is a new newcomer program for high school scholars with collegiate academies. And first, we always want to grab ourselves in student stories, right? So on the screen, you'll see three of my kids. On the left is Karina, in the middle is Hang, and on the right is Denilson. They were all three slated to be in the class of 2019. I got a call from my principal that year saying, you know, Emma, you're the best ESL teacher, right? You're the best we got. We really need you to help get these kids to pass the US History LEAP so they can graduate. And they were in a class of nine, right? I learned everything I could about US History. I learned everything I could about the LEAP exam and gave it my all. What was really sad and unfortunate is that those nine kids did not graduate. We tried to pass the LEAP in December. We tried again in May, right? Hang in the middle felt a lot of shame and regret from her family and as well as from herself and dropped out. Karina on the left was super, obviously super, I want to say deprimido, that's Spanish, but like, super down. And so she said she needed work, and she needed to provide for her family. And so we got her a part-time job in the library so that she could continue taking classes the following semester while she was also working in the library the rest of the day to prepare to take the test again. Denilson on the right, we made a schedule for him next semester so that he could come once a day and just study US History and pass the test. Thankfully, Karina, after that semester working in the library, was able to pass the test, finally able to graduate with the class of 2020. Denilson had to stay not just December, but through May and tried twice more. But then that's when COVID hit, right? 2020. And we got a waiver for kids to be able to not have to pass the LEAP in order to graduate that year, and that's how he was eligible to graduate.
You see this all over the state. Right now in Louisiana, 80% of our children, all of our children graduate. But that's only true for 41% of our English learners. When we look at parishes that have a bigger concentration of our English learners, right here at home, 35.6%, Jefferson Parish, our neighbor, is 30%, and then East Baton Rouge, 22. Half of that, half of our children make it across the stage.
As I just mentioned, there are a lot of barriers for English learners in Louisiana, right? You have to pass three LEAP tests in order to graduate, the English test, a math test, a US History, or a biology test. Math is offered in Spanish, the other two are not, right? Newcomers, but however, in other states, 41 other states actually, do not require students to pass a test in order to graduate. Newcomers, another barrier is that newcomers are often placed as T9 or freshmen despite of age. So you might get an 18-year-old that's new to the country as a freshman, and then they're 19, and they see that their peers are so much younger than them, right? And you might want to drop out. 33-plus other states don't have seat time requirements, right? They allow for accelerating their graduation pathway. 47% of ELs don't make ELP proficiency growth targets in Louisiana yet. That is currently a huge barrier to success. But in other states, right, we have EL resource classes that are credit-earning. Unfortunately, ESL in Louisiana is not a credit-earning class, and so it's not necessarily an incentive to give kids ESL as a class.
So we know those numbers are not indicative of our children's capabilities at all, right? It's a reflection of these barriers that are in front of them that are actually very unique to Louisiana, right? There are pathways in other states to give our children protections for them to make it to the finish line, to get across the stage. And this is how it bears out in the numbers. So again, in Louisiana, the graduation rate for our English learners is half of that of their peers. Texas, next door, their differential is much lower. Arkansas, surprisingly, has a lot of English learners, but their differential is also within 6%. New Jersey up north, they have a comparable population to us, has a small differential. And even California, the state with the most English learners, waived seat time requirements, allow for portfolio measures for English learners, and they also have a significantly smaller differential than us. And this is what our numbers look like at home, right? Comparing all the subgroups. All of our subgroups have trended up over the last few years, except for English learners. And I want to point out the trajectory of students with exceptionalities, how that's trended upwards considerably since 2015, 2016, after the passing of April Dunn Act, which allowed for students to show proficiency and content through portfolio and alternate means as well.
So I mentioned sort of what the pathway has been at Carver High School, where I was teaching ESL. In 2019, where we had those nine kids in my cohort that were not able to graduate, we had a 24% graduation rate of that graduating class. 2020, COVID hit, kids were meeting all seat time requirements, they were passing all of our classes, we had 100% of that graduating class graduate. 2020, kids were able to do 20-plus hours of instruction instead of pass a LEAP exam, and we yet again had 100% of that senior class graduate. So what this means to us is that kids are meeting seat time requirements, they're passing their classes, right? The barrier to success right now is the LEAP exam.
So this proposal has gone through a lot of refinements as we've talked to people across the state, as we've talked to people in different industries. So as currently stands, right, we still want our children to sit for the LEAP 2025. We still want them to pass all of their courses required for the diploma. We still want them to meet their seat time requirements. But we're also asking them to complete a standards-aligned portfolio for the LEAP 2025 courses and be in trajectory for English proficiency as measured by the ELPT. This is already a metric that's set in stone, right? That's defined as what is on trajectory. And holding our students to a very rigorous bar, but also allowing them an expanded way, expanded criteria to be eligible for graduation. So who would be eligible for this pathway? Any student that comes in the country between 6th and 12th grade. So again, like stamping that children who come in the country K5 are not eligible. They have ample time to learn the English language, right, and learn the academic language. This honors the language acquisition process, which is six to seven years, to achieve that academic language proficiency.
Yeah, and another thing is that SPS scores don't actually factor into achievement until a scholar or a student's third year into the country, right? So we want to hold kids with that same standard. If you're a newcomer coming to high school at 16, 17, 18 years old, if a school is not held accountable for, you know, SPS scores in two, three years, then you're not necessarily held accountable as well for passing those LEAP exams within those three years. And like Churuba said, on average, Dr. Wagner Romero knows, like, it takes six to seven years to acquire a language. And when we get kids in high school, they don't have that long, right? They have four years. There are some other implications. I think we want to make sure that SPS scores still reflect an increased graduation rate. SPS scores will reflect higher ELP scores. What this means is that we want to still hold kids accountable to ELP proficiency targets and make sure that there are classes, right, for kids that are dedicated towards English language proficiency, instead of necessarily having to take someone like me, for example, to train a kid to pass the LEAP, right? And we want to achieve our state goal. Our state goal is that 90% of kids who are English learners will graduate by 2025. Right now, we're at 43%. And this will also increase the workforce, right? Increase the workforce and economic participation across Louisiana. If we're having more kids graduate, we're having more kids eligible to enter the workforce and add to our economy. There are a number of organizations that we're partnering with right now. Alas, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, SLICE, Our Voice Noche Vol, Collegiate Academies, Laticele, Education Trust, Loyola University, because this is something that needs to change, right? We have so many people who know kids who have been affected by not being able to graduate because of the LEAP exam. I think what we wanted to mention to you all is that, we met with Superintendent Brumley back in February, we've met with Bessie members, and the next step forward was to build a coalition. And so that's what we've been doing, right? We've been building a coalition around this. So this becomes, like, politically expedient, right, for Louisiana. You as a board, like, are not able to make this statewide change. You're able to pass a resolution to support it, right? But we, Brumley said, that, you know, we have to have a number of boards, a number of people behind us that support this in order to show that this is, has momentum moving forward. And that leads us to our asks, right? Churuba, you want to go?
So, I mean, we're New Orleans-based, so we thought we would come to you all first. We knew you would be allies in this work. So we are asking for your formal support of the proposed policy. And then we're asking you, as Orleans Parish always does, is lead by example, right, and charge others in the state to do the same. And as allies in the work, continue to provide us constructive criticism, right? Help us refine our ask and our messaging. And if you could connect us to stakeholders, stakeholders who would advance this effort, that would be instrumental in making sure that this spring would see its first Excel graduating class.
So I do want to close with mentioning these children in front of us. Hang in the middle actually heard that Denilson and some of his peers were able to graduate, and she came back to Carver two weeks ago. And so she's 21 right now. She's in her last year where she's eligible to graduate. But she's inspired, right? Kids are inspired. They are seeing kids graduate because these tests have been waived. That's why now is the time. Another reason why now is the time is that our immigration rate is three times higher than it has been for the past three years, right? So I know you guys have seen the census for New Orleans. The Latinx population is only going to grow. So the time is now. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Begard? In this moment, this is not the time. I will certainly give you a point of personal privilege to do that. If you respect this presentation, can we finish this presentation? Thank you so much, and we will go ahead and allow you to move forward.
Yeah, I have a question of you all. I think you had a chart showing, I think it was graduation rates of different states, Louisiana, Texas, and others, and there was significant difference here in comparison to the other state, particularly, I think it was Texas I saw. I don't know if it's in here as well. What factors do you find that's inhibiting our students here, our English learners, students here in contrast to those in other states, particularly Texas, for example? Let's use them, for example. What's happening?
Texas actually did something a little more liberal, and they allowed all students, English learners and all their general population, to pass using portfolio requirements. This was done, I want to say, 2015, 2016. So now they also have an opportunity to graduate outside of state testing.
Say that again?
Students have an opportunity to be eligible for graduation outside of state testing, EL or not.
Yeah, I mean, I think that this relates back to the fact that there's 41 states that don't require a standardized test score in order to graduate, and Texas is one of those states, as well as all the states on the board.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When you say graduate, we've come up with, in this state, is different diplomas, right? So does Texas have a diploma for someone that doesn't take a standardized test and pass the test?
That's a great question. No, there's not a differentiated diploma. It's the same, a diploma across the board.
Okay, so how do they deal with federal funding that requires exit exams or standardized testing?
It is not a federal mandate that there needs to be a standardized test for graduation, but there does need to be standardized testing. It's just not standardized as a graduation requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, Ms. Merrill, Ms. Chavez, thank you so much for this presentation. This is really, really enlightening, and I'm very grateful, and as I know my colleagues are very grateful for all the work that you have put into this. I was literally sitting here with goosebumps the whole time, thought I was going to make it through, and then you mentioned Hang was coming back, and I got a little teary. So I'm really, really grateful for everything you've put in to this project thus far, and I'm excited to work with you, move in with Board Member Wagner Romero, to move this forward. I think you have identified that our current policy at the state level is the barrier, and you have also identified a thoughtful, data-driven, compassionate, common sense solution. And I could not be happier for, that the two of you have put in this work. So thank you so much.
We appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I'll just add, I would like to thank Dr. Wagner Romero also for bringing this to the board. What an excellent use of our time tonight in such an important meeting. And just add that I would be supportive of such a resolution and support of this new pathway. And thank y'all very much for the time and dedication you put into this presentation and your work.
Yeah, y'all, thank you for coming. I think your presentation is extremely important. It demonstrates, I would say yet again, that our school performance score, matrix, our accountability system in the state doesn't take into account that school, that students need an education program specific to their needs, and that the accountability system we've come up with is, in so many ways, it's not valid, and it is an impediment. It is an impediment to progress. And so not only do we need to come up with the correct programming to serve the students who are new arrivals, but also we need to work on that accountability matrix with Bessie, with Brumley. I would be very pleased to join you in that effort. I want y'all to get in touch with me, please, to talk much more about that. Please do. Thank you for being here.
Before we, I think, move to the comment cards that I'm going to allow, even though this is not an action item, I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege because Dr. Wagner Romero clearly brought this to the board. So I think it's important for those who are present who want to speak on this to have the opportunity to. I just want to say that I've had the opportunity to work closely with these young ladies who are clearly passionate about this work that is imperative in this moment. And I would ask my colleagues, as we've been, I think, working to solidify that resolution that was on there, I would love to make sure we bring that to the board, and I'm going to be asking, you know, our colleagues along with Dr. Wagner Merrill to ensure that we are one of the first to pass that, such that we can make a clear statement to Superintendent Brumley. Although I believe, in reality, he shouldn't need this. He should be able to just do it. That is leadership, but that's neither here nor there. But we will certainly take the charge to show how your coalition is building. So in this moment, I'll yield to Board Counsel to take us through the two cards that are currently here.
We appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
Our first comment card is from Derek Mejia Torres, and our second comment card after Mr. Derek will be Lisa Maria Rhodes.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me well?
Yes, good evening.
So I just wanted to give my point of view as a student. I graduated from International High School in 2020. I'm currently studying Wake Forest University in North Carolina with a full ride. And I just want to, thank you, thank you. I just want to express, you know, why this is so important. I came here when I was 12. I came here undocumented, and, you know, that's a struggle alone. And now having to think about whether, okay, would I be able to succeed in high school? You know, would I be able to go to college? That's another obstacle. So I just want you to think about, when we say our youth, what are we really thinking about? What is the youth of New Orleans? What is the youth of Louisiana? I feel I'm from New Orleans, even though I wasn't born here, because I live here, you know? My heart belongs to New Orleans. My heart belongs to Louisiana. And so that also happens to many other children that come here as minors, you know? Even though they're not born here, even though we don't speak the language right away, we still belong to this place. And so what happens often is that this system is taking away the opportunity for this young people to succeed in life, you know? Which later on, that will reflect on having more lawyers, more attorneys, more doctors, more professionals that will contribute back to this place, you know, to more professionals that will contribute back to, to this place, you know, to, to Louisiana. So I just want to just emphasize the importance of this project that will allow us, the students, to, to have other pathways, um, you know, to, to graduate and, and able to, to think further than just, okay, would I, you know, is it, is it really important? Is it really necessary for me to work knowing that with the level of English I have at the moment, I would not be able to pass this test, you know? Um, so what often happens, and it hurts my heart, when I see some of my friends, they choose to go to work and work in construction, they choose, some of the ladies go to hotels and work in hotels. And you know, even though that might be, you know, good for some people, that's the only option they have. So that, that should not be the case. The case should be that they should have the resources to go study, get their education, and then succeed and, and provide to their family, provide to the community. And so that's why I'm here, and thank you all for, for listening.
Before Lisa Maria goes, I just want to say, Derek, I think we were in a meeting together recently, maybe it had to do with ALAS, because I've been engaging with the organization since its founding. But I just want to express, I am so impressed by you, um, and your story and your resilience, uh, and how you're continuing to work towards an education to help others, right? To ensure that our communities, hopefully you come back to New Orleans, to ensure that our people and our communities are continuing to move forward and are thriving. So we need you as a champion, and thank you so much for, for being committed to this work. We really appreciate it.
Buenas tardes, or maybe buenas noches by now. Thank you for having us today, and greetings to all of you. I come to you as an educator and now as the Executive Director of ALAS. And, um, to your point, Dr. Romero, um, Derek already is coming back and investing in his community. This summer, he came back as a student organizer for ALAS, and he is being trained up as a potential future ED for ALAS. And I'm, I'm saying that and claiming that now. Um, but I stand before you all tonight to also bring forward some of the larger implications. When students are in school and when they have pathways, they do take advantage of those opportunities. And when we have looked at, I, I mean, I remember in 2015, I believe it was, when we expanded education and graduation pathways for our students with diverse learning needs. And I've seen so many more of my students graduate and have meaningful post-secondary access after that. I don't have to tell any of you how important access to post-secondary options is, and how high school graduation is a pathway to that. But I do want to tell you a little bit about what we do at ALAS is train educators to connect undocumented youth with legal representation. And you may or may not know that there are no court-appointed attorneys in immigration court. So that means when our students go before a court in a language that's not their own, they go alone, often without an attorney, if they can't afford the $15,000 to $20,000 to represent themselves. We do have, uh, 487 students who have connected with representation, and their standing in school is a major deciding factor of whether the judges grant their permanent residence status. So the opportunity that you have to show leadership in this state, to make sure that we expand pathways for our students to be able to graduate and move on to post-secondary opportunities, it's not just about their career access, their educational access, it's also about the dignity to live free of the fear of deportation. It's also about access to healthcare and to public services. It's also about the defining of the Constitution when it says, "We the people." We don't have a national language in the United States because that was designed to include everyone. You've all seen what's happened historically when groups have been left out of that, and this is the group that's being left out right now. So I charge you, thank you for your support, and to stand with us on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If my colleagues don't have any other questions, that concludes the presentation portion of tonight's meeting. I yield to President Ashley.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Wagner Romero. Uh, look, I, I think we've had a, a robust, uh, meeting. Uh, but before I get to closing, uh, we've had the opportunity to hear from parents, uh, throughout the night. I think it's important, uh, that we continue, uh, in this moment to hear from those who didn't necessarily have the opportunity to speak earlier. Uh, I'm not saying that Ms. Begard didn't have the opportunity to speak earlier, but I am going to extend the opportunity for you to have another two minutes, uh, to speak on the point that you want to make. Uh, and from there, I will close. And for any of my, my fellow board members who would like to stay, uh, and engage, I certainly encourage it. Uh, and, and so I will end there, uh, giving my point of personal privilege to you, uh, and, and we will move from there.
Okay, thank you. Um, again, Ashana Begard, 1820 St. Thomas. I'm sorry, 1840. Um, I, I want to start by saying, I, I really liked your presentation, but also I want to say that, you know, this form that you spoke on, the COVID health eligibility form, it says it has to be signed by a physician, nurse, nurse practitioner, psychiatrist. A lot of undocumented families do not have money for healthcare or to the ability to get this signature if they have someone who is immune compromised, first off, since we're talking about undocumented youth, which I've done a lot of advocacy for. So, but also, the schools have the option to not accept this. They have the option to say, "No." They have the option to decide that the parents cannot go virtual because we haven't put anything in place to make them take it. So that means if I have a grandmother who's immune compromised, who lives in the house with me, they will, they have said to a parent, "The grandmother is not a parent or guardian. Therefore, she doesn't count as an immune compromised person," so that the child cannot have a virtual option. This has happened. I know it will continue to happen as more parents sign up for this. So I just want to let you know that if the grandmother gets sick, if the child gets exposed and grandmother gets sick and dies, that will affect that child. Not only that, again, if that child brings it back to their parents or their siblings, again, that will affect the child. So I understand this is an option, and we're grateful, but it's also an option that charter schools can turn down. And also, we're have, dealing with a privilege issue, which Hines already has a virtual option. So we're always dealing with the haves who have and the have-nots who don't have. And I really think we need to stop that at the core, because we've done that for too long. So again, I implore you to give parents a virtual option across the board, understand that the have-nots will not have, including undocumented families, families who do not have, who have not signed up for Medicaid for whatever reason. A lot of parents who, um, are felons and have other issues have roadblocks to this kind of thing, right? So I need y'all to consider that. Also, consider the fact that Louisiana has the highest rate of asthma allergies in the country. We have the highest rate of immune compromised children in the country. So we know that a lot of our children do need a virtual option. This is not guesswork, Google it, you don't have to believe me. So I'm asking y'all to please take this in consideration in moving forward. Thank you.
Before you go, first of all, thank you for providing that additional information. Uh, it's a positive way in which we may be able to address some, some areas that need to be addressed. But are you saying that grandparents are not counted as, as family, family members and?
It's up to, it's up to each school district, that's their own LEA. Sometimes it's up to each individual school, because these charter schools operate in silos. So there is not a, there's not a cross-the-board policy with any of them. My children go to two schools, two different policies completely, and that's true for most parents. And so literally, like, one child is out of school, one child is in school, one child has to start, my, my daughter started school two weeks ago, my son started school Monday. There is no across-the-board anything for parents. We've been being promised this for a couple of years, but it has yet to happen. So nothing is across the board. So one school may be like, great, just like Hines, they have a virtual option, right? Some, some schools may say, "Of course, your grandparent counts." But then other schools are like, "No, they don't." And see, that is the issue, is that we have nothing across the board, there's no stability for parents and families in this community.
Well, that's useful information, because it may be, it may be incumbent upon us as a board to look at areas that we may need to develop policy, uh, so that we can protect all of our students and our families. So thank you for, uh, providing that. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing that additional comment. Thank you.
Problem. And before we close, I'm going to yield to Superintendent.
Thank you, President Ashley. Uh, thank you, Ms. Begard, as well. Um, also, I did not mention, um, if families have concerns, again, as they may have gone to the doctor and have concern whether they would not approve or, or, or what we heard on this evening, I encourage our families to contact us here at the school district. Our, um, our family hotline is 527-KIDS, so five-two, five-two-seven-kids. Um, so if you have challenges, again, when it comes down to even the example of a grandparent, we encourage our families to go to their physician and bring that information back to the school, because we know that there's various challenges and, and we need to be able to understand the needs of our families. But if there are concerns from a school or a particular school or, or, or in getting this whole process done, please contact the district at 527-KIDS. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Senator, can I just note that the, this COVID-19 health eligibility form is only posted in English on our website, which is an additional barrier, perhaps?
I'm told that we are getting translations, so that, that will be handled. Uh, thank you so much, Board, Superintendent, staff, community, for being here. Uh, at this time, there are no further items on our agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Have a motion by Mr. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Member Baldwin. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none, that motion carries. The time now is 7:57 PM. The meeting is adjourned.